Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have Pastor Jerry Storrs give us an invocation, and then after that Supervisor Sertie will lead us in the pledge.
Good morning Supervisors. Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Mike, Jeffrey, Stephen, Jeff, and Rich. Guide them. Guide them by your Spirit that they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty; that under them our Pinell County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. I'd hope that you'd all join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands-
One nation-
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you everybody. I'll call this Pinell County Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, October 1st. Please silence your cellphones, which I always forget to do, so I'm gonna do mine right now. All right. Item number one is the County Manager's Report.
Good morning Chairman, thank you. First thing I wanted to let you and the public know is that for the first time in 50 years, SEMICon West, this semiconductor manufacturing and ecosystem conference is happening outside of California, and it's gonna be happening here in Phoenix. The last several years, and last year included, it was in San Francisco. So let me just, for your awareness, read about who they are. SEMICon West brings the incredibly diverse global electronics supply chain together to address the semiconductor ecosystem's greatest opportunities and challenges through programs highlighting market intelligence, standards, workforce development, semi-university, supply chain management, and much more. Semi-member companies provide the equipment, materials, software, devices, and services that enable technologies to create a smarter world. Jointly we align and aggregate resources facilitating the acceleration of innovation for better business results. So this convention happens all over the world. They do it in India, Taiwan, Europa, Japan, South Korea, and SEMICon West is happening for the first time in Arizona at the Phoenix Convention Center. We do have a booth there, and Joel will be there in Kaden, and so next week, Monday through Thursday, we'll be there making connections. There's 377 international reps from Taiwan, Japan, Korea, Netherlands, Malaysia, Germany, Canada, Mexico, and others. So congratulations to Arizona for having this, and as you know, both in the Phoenix MSA and throughout Pinell County, we are involved in this industry and the manufacturers and suppliers to this industry. The second thing is we want to congratulate Rhonda Garcia, who is actually celebrating her 39 years with the county later this month. She started back in October 20th of 1986. But the reason we're celebrating her is because she is going to be the interim public fiduciary. If you remember, we celebrated Ernie Appel and his retirement at a previous meeting. Rhonda is a certified fiduciary through the Arizona Supreme Court and a nationally certified guardian with the Center for Guardianship Certification, and she's been in case management and guardianship since 1996. So thank you Rhonda for stepping up to be the interim public fiduciary. Thank you Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Brings us to item number two, which is notable current and upcoming events with each of the districts. Supervisor Sertie, do you have anything?
Yep, you always make me go first.
I do.
Yes.
I like you.
Okay. So, the government is shut down, so a lot of people are gonna get paid vacations, because they will all get paid when it's all over. But we're still open, and the county's always here. We don't ever shut down. I see Sheriff Tippel is in the audience. I have good news for especially districts like four and five. We have a new range deputy, and we also have a range sergeant now. So we're actually strengthening how we're gonna service the remote areas of the county, so that's awesome. And also I want to announce, Peralta Park, it's getting time for our tourist season, we are in need of a range host. And so it's a certain kind of lifestyle to wanna do this, but you're given a free hookup, free solar, free sewer. You get to stay there for the whole winter, and all you do is help people out, say, "Go over here," whatever, and warn them about the dangers and the good things to do. So if anybody's interested in Aunt Leo, I'm not sure where they would contact, somewhere through the website I imagine.
Yeah, yeah, or they can contact either Homachi Patel or Scott Hamilton.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all for me.
Vice Goodman.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, we had the swearing-in last Thursday of the first. Town Council for Santan Valley Supervisor McClure was present with me, and we were able to get all seven of those sworn in, and they're up and running. Their first town hall meeting will be tonight. Just wanna make that public, make it known to the public. In addition to that, we have several fall events that are coming up. We got what they call Hoot Night, which is the school district, Florence School District. We have, then there's a, we have a bike rodeo that we've done before in the past. We're doing it again. It'll be at the Home Depot parking lot, Wincop parking lot. That'll be on, oh shoot, October 18th in the morning. And then we also have, you know, because of the floods and everything that took place in Globe Miami, we had over 2,000 volunteers from the East Valley area, which included a lot of our residents in Pinell County, that participated in a cleanup on Monday, which goes to show the compassion that a lot of our residents have for other individuals, especially in time of need such as that. And so my big shout-out to all those that were able to go and help do the cleanup and so on and so forth. There's a lot more to do. They're gonna organize some other type of cleanups in that area. In our own area, in my district, off of Skyline, which is commonly known as Little Mexico, we had a major flooding that occurred, and several businesses were affected by that, which they're shut down, and they're doing some major cleanups. I'm working with Joe Ortiz, as well as Chris Wanamaker, to discuss and look at what the possibilities we could be doing from the county perspective, even from the state level, to give assistance to those businesses and those residents in that region, in that particular area. Other than that, that's a pretty busy schedule that we're still looking forward to on other things. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Rich?
Thank you very much. So unfortunately, I was unable to attend, Mike and Jeff. I apologize for that. I was under the weather with a sinus infection, strep throat, and I figured best to stay away. But I heard it went well, and thank you for attending that and getting them sworn in. But I was able to attend, you know, Queen Creek's council meetings. I'm attending many council meetings throughout the, not only Pinell County, but even Maricopa County, and I'm gonna try to get all over the state if possible. A little bit about the legislative stuff about taking away cities and towns, planning and zoning rights, and that's something that the county supervisors, we do not support taking away that, and we'll continue working on that. Also went to a CSA meeting, was a luncheon, kind of a newbie luncheon. It was great to see some of the other county supervisors there. Again, Chairman Miller was there doing his thing as usual, water, water, water. So it was nice to see that. I also attended Eloy. Again, I'm going from council to council to talk to him about this, to get their support about this. Also, I attended, in the city of Maricopa, Mike Ingram has been a big supporter of lots of things going on in the city. He's probably the reason why the city of Maricopa exists. And they dedicated a Heritage Park to him. So we did the grand opening, a groundbreaking for Heritage Park. So that was a nice thing. And then also Angela Sanchez, a new liaison for me for Development Services, came out yesterday, and I got to tour her around Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms and show her some of the stuff that's been going on. One of the big things that, and I do appreciate Development Services, especially Kenny White, who we had some serious dumping going on out there, and Sheriff Tippel's really helped me with this and his deputies, and I do appreciate that. We're getting tired of this, and we're gonna track you down, and if you've got mail in there, I actually dug mail out of this people's garbage on Sunday morning at 6:30 and found out who dumped this. And we're not gonna stop this. This has gotta stop in the desert areas, all over the county, all over the state. For $27, $30, go to a dump and dump your garbage. Don't dump them in other people's backyards. I'm getting tired of it. I get a phone call almost every week about this, and I literally go out there, and I had to move furniture off a road that people have to drive down, and I'm getting sick and tired of it. And I'm actually, like I said, working with the Sheriff's Department to make sure that we track these people down, make them pay for it, because we, taxpayers, are paying Development Services to go out and clean this stuff up, and it could cost us, you know, a couple thousand dollars to do this. So, again, if you see it, let people know about it, where you live in the desert areas, and please, just contact the Sheriff's Department, let them know, drop them, you know, a note where it is, an address if you happen to know, and let's stop these people from coming out to our desert and dumping stuff in there. I wish we could pick it all up and go dump it on their front lawn and see how they like it. So, anyway, if you see it, say something about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Jeff?
There we go. Thank you Chair. To that point, Pinell County Attorney's Office used to have a reward program for that, probably five years ago is my recollection. I don't know that that still goes on, but that's something to be aware of. We'll catch up on that. Yes, I was at the Santan Valley Council swearing-in. That was a lot of fun, and I think that'll be a great addition to the county. Last Tuesday, I was at the Arizona City Veterans Meeting at the Gospel Life Mission Church. I was one of the speakers. That was a fun group to get with. I will be out in Arizona City on October 22nd at 10:00 AM at the library for a town hall with Public Works and-
Housing.
Housing, thank you. Like that? Stage left. Okay.
Why we have staff.
Yeah. And to Supervisor Goodman's bike rodeo, I, so, I'll do a Goodman here. I'm gonna tell a story. So, back in the 7th grade, I had a friend that was a wannabe cowboy, and so we would ride our bikes up and down the street, and that's where I learned how to lasso. So every time I hear "bike rodeo," I think, "Oh yeah, go lasso those kids," you know. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Great. All right, everybody, thank you. So, I'm gonna talk about something that's gonna happen. So, anyway, this Saturday, October 4th, here in Florence, we are going to celebrate our 150th year of Pinell County. It should be a great event. There's free, it's free, family-friendly, events for music and food trucks, kid and adult zones, giveaways, drone show, and fireworks. So we kinda got it all going this Saturday. Special thanks to all the entities and companies and businesses that have sponsored this celebration. Tremendous amount of support from everyone for that, and we thank each and every one of them for participating. So I'm looking forward to as many that can make it this Saturday. It's from 3:00 to 9:00, and it should be a good time. We've got some music and entertainment, and it'll be capped off with a drone and fireworks show. So I look forward to seeing as many of you there that can attend. With that, we'll move on to item number, item number three, which is a discussion of approval or disapproval of a proclamation declaring the month of October 25th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Pinell County, introduced by survivor Alice Santa? Is that right? Maria? Okay. Oh, Maria, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last, third name. Sorry about that. And, but before we allow you to, come on up please, and bring your sidekick. So before we allow you to read it, we will require a vote by the Board of Supervisors, and does anybody have any-
Chairman, just if we may, if we can just introduce the item before we go into the actual reading of the proclamation and of course the vote as well.
Okay.
Okay. I am Natasha Kennedy, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, and at this time, I would like to invite all of our breast cancer survivors who are present to please come forward and stand with us as we recognize the strength, courage, and journey that we all have taken as survivors of breast cancer. And with that-
Thank you for taking charge.
Chairman Miller, members of the board, my name is Alicia Santa Maria, and I work for the Recorder's Office in Apache Junction, and I am a nine-year breast cancer survivor. This Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation is brought forward to increase awareness among the county employees and our community about the impact of breast cancer. It highlights the importance of education, early educate, sorry, early detection, and support for those affected. Through this action, the board is reaffirming its commitment to stand with us as survivors, honor the lives touched by this disease, and encourage wellness and awareness throughout Pinell County. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments at this point in time? What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, it would be my pleasure to make a motion that we approve a pro, a pro, a boy.
Proclamation.
Proclamation declaring the month of October 25th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month here in Pinell County.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. The ayes have it. Would one of you please read that? After, after, who's gonna read? After that, don't leave, because we're gonna get a photo of all of you.
Good morning. My name is Annadel Carmen Chavez. I work currently for the Health Department in the Women's Health Department. I am a two-time breast cancer survivor of 20 and 25 years. By the, whereas October National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease and incredible public, increased public knowledge about the importance and early detection of breast cancer diagnosis, treatment, and, whereas today, there are more than 4 million breast cancer survivors in the U.S., more than any other group of cancer survivors. The American Society, Cancer Society estimates there will be more than 5 million breast cancer survivors by 2035, and whereas, while breast cancer is most common among women, but about 1 in 833 men will also be diagnosed in their lifetime. And whereas, early detection is the strongest defense, if found before spreading, the five-year survival rate is over 99%. The American Cancer Society recommends annual mammograms starting at age 40, and a 15-minute screening should save your life. And whereas, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors acknowledges the profound impact breast cancer has had on our workforce and community, some are actively fighting, some have survived, and others are remembered. We honor the strength of survivors, stand beside those currently in treatment, and extend our compassion to the families who have lost their loved ones. And whereas, Pinell County Board of Supervisors affirm the commitment to support every member of our county, women and men, by encouraging screening, providing education, and offering compassion to all touched by this disease. Now therefore, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 25th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Pinell County.
Thank you. I see we have Kevin in the wings here. So can we get a photo of all of you?
I don't know where they want us to go.
I'm sure.
Look right here, 3-2. We're gonna do it again. Mike smiles, love it. 3-2. Okay, ready? Rest your face. Nishka, you gonna go sit in front? Okay, one more. Here we go. Big smile. 3-2. Thank you very much. We got you covered.
Got you covered.
Yeah. All right, everyone, thank you. Brings us to item number four, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of the Purchasing Division report. We have Tracy Gorman to present.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good morning Board of Supervisors, Chairman and Vice Chairman. I'm Tracy Gorman, Purchasing Manager for Pinell County. In this report, the board has requested to approve one contract award for RLQ 26073, which will be awarded to five different contractors, for job order contract, JOC, for general construction and facility maintenance services. The board is requested to approve four contract amendments for IFB 221126 for landfill disposal services, RFP 222426 for trauma counseling, RFP 230428 for the state lobbyist services, RFP 242729 for landscaping services. We are requesting the board approve one competition impractical over 100,000 per procurement code, section PC 1-502. And there is one cooperative purchasing agreement we would like to notify you of, as it is between 100,000 and 250,000.
Okay.
What are the questions?
Any questions? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division report is presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, brings us to item number five, the consent items. I see we have one item already being pulled, F. Anybody on the board want anything pulled? Mr. Lou, from the audience, anybody want something pulled?
G and U.
G and U. Okay. Okay. All right. Board's pleasure?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A through U minus F, G, and U.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Item F, pulled by Natasha.
Yes Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, and board members. The attached docket 1019 parcel 202-07-110 should not have been included in the spreadsheet with the values, as it was determined during the actual hearing that the actual board lacked jurisdiction, and that board being the State Board of Equalization. Therefore, there is a additional attached spreadsheet to that item, and the recommended, the recommended motion is for the board to approve as presented the final notice evaluation spreadsheet.
Okay. Any questions? Board's pleasure?
So, Mr. Chair, I move we approve item F as presented with the final notice evaluation spreadsheet attached.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Moves us to item, what was it? G, right beneath that. So this is a discussion approval or disapproval of the fiscal year 25-26 budget amendment for previously approved expenses related to Snell and Wilmer's ongoing attorney services regarding Fontes versus Kavanaugh. Who do we have here that can speak to this?
Ask the questions.
Oh, you wanna, can you give us your question? I'm sorry, Roberto? You have a specific question about this item?
Maso Manos, Roberto Ravelas, Gold Canyon. Ms. Chairman, I'm constantly alert about trying to reinforce confidence in our election process. My question's very simple. In general, what are the major expenses that are being approved here?
Okay. I believe this is invoicing, is it not, from Snell and Wilmer? Either one of you? Typically, that's what it is.
Thank you Chairman. So this started last fiscal year, and you had a budget amendment approved in order to fund outside counsel on this case. The case isn't completely over yet, and there have been ongoing levels of back and forth with the attorneys and some amicus briefing. And so these expenses are related to things that occurred here in this fiscal year. As far as the details of the case itself, I don't think it's appropriate for me to disclose it in this circumstance.
But this is because it crossed over from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year.
Yes. And Ms. Chairman, if with due respect to a timely disclosure to the public, I think it would be very helpful in continuing to increase confidence in our elections if those disclosures could be made when appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
For the question. Supervisor Goodman?
I think at some point, I think that's very valuable, that we disclose, at some point when the time's ready, that we disclose to the, to the public as a whole what this is all about. So, thank you.
So can I get a motion unless any other questions on item G by the board? Okay, not hearing any? Can I have a motion on item G?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item G as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. U. Okay, Mr. Rell, do you have a specific question on this item U?
Roberto Ravelas, President of Gold- Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon, again. And again, along the same theme of building confidence in business being transacted by the Board and in light of what happened this past week where the President, in effect, declared war on certain American citizens and, in fact, expressed the thought that American cities would be a good training ground for the military. I, I wanted assurance that this vehicle that's being purchased, and the item was pulled at previous meeting because of its description as an armored vehicle. Now, the new term being used is SWAT vehicle. And, and again, in terms of building confidence between the community and law enforcement, it would be helpful to get reassurance from the Sheriff's Office that this SWAT vehicle is not gonna be misused in a military operation. And that's a very real question to raise, I'm not trying to be dramatic about it.
All right, well, the Sheriff is here, I believe. We'll see if he can address that.
Mr. Chairman, County Supervisors, Pinal County Sheriff Ross Tople. I, I have to admit, I'm a little confused because item U doesn't have SWAT vehicle in it at all. So if I could get... It says discussion approval, disapproval to accept fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, Senate Bill seventeen thirty-five appropriation to the Pinal County through the Pinal County Board of Supervisors beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six for four hundred thousand dollars. The Sheriff's Office will use the award for eligible expenses, including equipment. Acceptance requires an amendment to fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget to transfer appropriation from Fund two thirteen. And I think we're getting the previous one confused with this one. I, we, I just had an Arizona Sheriff's meeting yesterday with the other sheriffs and we, we don't have anywhere to describe this other than it's free money from the state government. We're now discussing what we want to use it for. We do have some equipment needs. We also have some training that I'd like to give my deputies that would keep not only them safer, but the citizens of Pinal County safer. But this was Senate Bill seventeen thirty-five, the General Appropriations Act. We were watching it because that was the money that was improving, that we were getting money to improve our interoperability for our records-keeping management system. It's sad that in twenty-twenty-five, I still can't read Coolidge P D's local records. And so this, that was what this, the, this appropriations bill was for, was for the interoperability so we could all see each other's records and so there's more transparency. Somewhere along the way through the legislative process, these miscellaneous appropriations got attached to that Senate bill. So after it got passed, it's, hey, Pinal County, here's four hundred thousand dollars for you to use for equipment and expenditures that we recognize came about because of the out of, out of control inflation in twenty-twenty-four. Was the way it was described to us at the Arizona Sheriff's Association. So I would appreciate it if the Board of Supervisors would approve this so we can use this money appropriately for Pinal County.
The language is pretty broad. I mean, it sounds like it could be used for a multitude of places. I mean, it's not real specific on where the use has to be.
No, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Supervisor Goodman, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, I, for clarification then, especially in regards to the question that was asked. Would it be, is it a fair assumption? Or can you state that whatever these dollars will be used for is for law enforcement? It's to help provide safety, whatever the case may be, but to help to enforce the law?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, it's, it's, it's used to assist local law enforcement, not only the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. One of the things that we did discuss is the fact that we have a robot that we can send into a house during a SWAT hostage situation. That robot, literally right now, is someone drives with a pickup truck. It takes several people to pick the robot up, put it in the back of a pickup truck, and then drive it to the scene. We're looking at this money of possibly buying, the way I describe it is a handicap van, but it's an equipment van that has a lift gate in the back of it. So we could have the robot in that lift van. Someone could drive it there, put it on the lift gate, drop it down, and it causes us to use less manpower so the manpower can be holding the perimeter or assisting with other calls for service. Yes, sir.
Okay. That helps me a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions? The Sheriff?
Comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I feel that the Sheriff's Department should be better equipped than even, you know, us. How many times do you see where there's a disaster? Like, for instance, the Cajun Navy in the, in the South when there's flooding, the folks have to get their own boats to go rescue people or get their big four-wheel drives to go cross water. I think we should give the Sheriff's Department any tool that they need to keep us as safe as possible, whether it be a defensive vehicle or a high clearance or the helicopters that you're putting in that are, that you're making sure we have the right ones. So I, I agree that we, we should fund them. It's, they, it keeps us all safer.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Any other questions, comments? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to approve item U as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, I think that gets us to item six, a meeting of the Pinal County Flood Control District. All right, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Pinal County Flood Control District. The, they're all consent items at this time. So we have all items indicated alphabetically below will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a Board member or County Manager or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. It looks like we have A through B. Anybody want anything pulled on the flood district? County Manager, from the audience? Not seeing any? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve items A and B on the consent agenda of the Pinal County Flood Control District.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. I'll re, I'll adjourn the flood control district meeting and we will move to the library. Okay, I'll open up the Pinal County Library District meeting. All items indicated alphabetically below are handled by a single vote as part of the agenda unless a Board member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We have, it looks like, A through C. Board? County Manager? Public? Seeing none? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Was there somebody?
Chairman, if I may.
Hey.
Ms. Roberto, you've had Public Health on the agenda. We're in...
We're, we're in library.
We're in library right now.
So, next, next item. I have your card here, okay? Okay, back to the library. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items for the Pinal County Library District dated Wednesday, October first, as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. I'm going to adjourn the Library District meeting. Brings us to item number, it's actually probably eight on your agenda, but it's the Pinal County Public Health Services District meeting. I'll call it to order. All items, all items indicated alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the Board member, unless a Board member or the County Manager or a member of the public objects at the time the item is called. We, I do have a card that's requesting item... I don't know which number, which letter did you want to be addressed, Mr. Ravelas? I don't see it on here.
Again, Roberto Ravelas. And again, Ms. Chairman, because of some of the controversial information coming out on public health vaccinations, I'm curious if someone from the Public Health Board could point out what the trend is in Pinal County on vaccinations? Is the tra, a trend upwards towards vaccinations or downwards?
Does it be? Is, yeah, it does. Is anybody here from Public, oh, there we go. Cory. See if she can address your question, Mr. Ravelas.
Good morning. Cory Redden, Deputy Director of Public Health. In answer to Mr. Ravelas's question about immunizations, we currently are maintaining our status of at least eighty percent coverage for immunizations. Each vaccination may have a different percentage. We can, by all means, get the exact data for Mr. Ravelas if he so desires. Yes, so we'll get, we'll get a report sent to Ms. Kennedy and shared with the Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Sound good? Thank you.
I guess, we'll just go ahead and do all three of them? Is that good? Okay. So, any other questions or comments about the Pinal County Public Health Services District? I have items A through C.
So, Mr. Chair, I move we approve items A through C and the consent items for the Public Health Services Board of Directors' agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Go to call to the public, we now, item nine. So, we're at the...
Chairman, I'm sorry, if we may, can we adjourn the Public Health?
Adjourn the Public Health and I call the public, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors regular agenda to order. We have cards? Okay, we're at the call to the public portion of the meeting. The call to the public is a time and period for the members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors to provide public input relating to subject matters within the Board of Supervisors authority or jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Actions taken by the, taken as a result of the public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter and rescheduling it for further consideration and discussion at a later date. I do have a couple of cards here, so we'll just take them as I got them. Dee. I don't like butchering your last name. And I'm sorry. Podasky?
That, that works.
That works?
But it's Dee, ah...
Thank you.
Two syllables. Hi, I live in unincorporated Pinal County. My name is Dia Podasky. I qualify for membership in the Daughters of American Revolution and have a thirteen-year perfect attendance pin for Sunday School. Yet, when people see me, what they see is brown. I grew up in Tama, a small rural town in Iowa next to the Musquaki Settlement. When I told people I was from Tama, I could see them thinking, ah, Musquaki. I left Iowa and spent the next thirty-plus years living in the Yakima Valley of Washington. When I told people I was from the valley, a smile would light their face. Ah, Mexican. I'm neither, but I am human and our proclivity for lumping others into categories is built into our D N A. It started as a survival mechanism. Today, it is tied to our need for community. We group by many things, including race, religion, politics, and shared interests. A real-life example of our making decisions based on the category we assign people to is who we set by in a group of strangers. There is no doubt that in a room of elected Pinal County officials, I would pick Dana Lewis, the only woman. My grandfather's chosen community was the American Legion. My mother-in-law, her church. I like book groups, theatergoers, and NFL fans. The categorization can become problematic. For example, using something other than merit, such as race, gender, nepotism, or shared political views in hiring or admission. Another example is when racial profiling becomes a sanctioned government policy, as in the recent Supreme Court ruling that ICE in California can use perceived ethnicity, language, location, and occupation in immigration enforcement. But the most egregious way we transform our natural and acceptable desire for community into something toxic is we devolve into using our categories to format hatred. We have become an us-versus-them society. Recently, empathy has been labeled as toxic. I believe it is the opposite. Empathy is ability to understand and share the feelings of others. It requires an emotional component of really feeling what the other person is feeling. It is the antithesis of us versus them. We need to go beyond categories we conveniently and comfortably place people into and view everyone as unique. Only then is it possible to develop empathy. And empathy keeps one from pulling the trigger. Thank you.
I have a card for Mr. Barry McCain.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Barry McCain from Maricopa. Born and raised here, after twenty years of United States Navy. One thing I'd like to say is, I came to this Board of Supervisors in two thousand and twelve because of my PTSD, didn't like the harassment from groups that didn't have one credit hour at college. They were fake it just to make it. But I, I want, I want to stop and say, I appreciate the Sheriff and I appreciate Roberto Ravelas. With everything they're doing, this is really important. Transparency is here because my important, why I came here was the integrity of this Board. Right now, we've got a half-cent tax in Maricopa, which they can't justify it. We've got so many things to do. I don't need people around here trying to threaten anybody because they think that they're twenty-one years of boxing. I'm telling you, fools are fools, they'll be that way. And I appreciate this Board of Supervisors. Since two thousand and twelve, I wanted the integrity of this Board be taken seriously. And I have to say, I appreciate Supervisor as well as the Sheriff and I appreciate Roberto Ravelas for all the things he's doing. We've got to change things. I represent police as well as firefighters, but we've got a hundred and fifty bills to legislate for Pinal County and I'm gonna need your help. And I, I need people that are thinking in terms of how we can better get things done, not sit up there and threaten people, people getting shot lately. But I do appreciate this Board of Supervisors. In particular, Supervisor Goodman, Supervisor Sertie. But we've got a lot to do and, and we need to understand that there's more than one person in this world. Just hope nobody else gets shot anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Under the public comment period? Mr. Ravelas?
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Our constitutional democratic republic is under increased attack by promoters of physical violence and extremist governing policies. Policies that thus far, unfortunately, have been met by silence. Violence that has killed Democratic and Republican officeholders. Deaths are cathedrals. Violence that has killed Democratic and Republican officeholders, deaths of Catholics and Mormons, Muslims and Jews, violence against Black and Brown activists, disappearance of government critics at the hands of mass secret agents, violence by extremist one-party rule that victimizes families who count on access to affordable healthcare, housing, food, and public education, violence under the degenerative leadership of a rapist and felon who unfortunately was endorsed for the presidency in this chamber, violence facilitated by corrupt president who continues to seduce traditional Republicans into an unrecognizable party that previously proclaimed loyalty to the Constitution, rule of law, free speech, and equal justice in the law, political words that now ring fatally hollow. After deploying National Guard troops through Washington, Los Angeles, Portland, the wannabe dictator yesterday declared he wants to use American citizens as training grounds for military occupation. One is forced to conclude that last night's government shutdown is by a tactical maneuver in Trump's war against American citizens, a move that weakens Arizona Pinal County by denying affordable healthcare to 2.7 million Arizonans, 28.7% of our state's population, whose health costs are expected to double or triple. What are you supervisors doing about this? Are you okay with this? A shutdown that stops paychecks to an estimated 34,000 to 58,700 Arizona federal workers, including those who administer Casa Grande, ruin Superstition Mountains Wilderness, Coronado National Forests, et cetera. Trump's political violence and economic warfare against your constituents must be actively opposed. These threats to Arizona families request thoughtful response. The impacts on Arizona cannot be resolved by silence. Do something. Contact your congressional Republican colleagues. Hold town halls. Judging from however previous reactions from this board, I suspect the reply in Trump's war on American residents and our citizens will be fearful violence. But as a tragic, ironic victim of political violence recently put it, prove me wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 10 on the agenda, which tells me to take item number 11 first. So, this is tied to some fees. There we go.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Sean Babu, I serve as the Presiding Justice of the Peace for Pinal County. We are doing number 11 first, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and this will have a public comment, a public hearing component to it, both 10 and 11, but go ahead and present, and then I'll open up the public hearing.
All right. Great. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. This, item number 11, is the ordinance number 100125JC02. It's the Pinal County Justice Corps Security Enhancement Fee Ordinance. If passed, the new ordinance would establish a $60 fee that would be assessed in addition to any other fines, fees, or assessments levied in criminal, criminal traffic, and civil traffic matters. If approved, the fee will help ease the burden on taxpayers for the expenses incurred by the Justice Courts to secure court facilities, defray costs for court security officers, and for the purchase and replacement of court security equipment or security improvements at the court facilities. This item was presented to the Board at the September 10th work session of 2025. No revisions were requested. The required public comment period was held, advertised properly, and concluded with one comment that was responded to in writing by myself. And happy to answer any questions or if it's open for other comments as well.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So, Judge Babu, $60 fee, is it for guilty or non-guilt or both?
So, it's only on adjudicated cases where there's a finding of guilt or somebody's pled guilty or responsible on civil traffic matters?
So, the people that make it out unscathed, as it were, would not pay this fee even though they are getting the same security as the people that are now found guilty? So, the burden is going to, you know, one half, not the other, that seems?
People who get cited into the court and they're found not responsible on civil traffic or not guilty in a criminal case are dismissed. Their case may be dismissed because they did diversion, right, through the county attorney's office? We have many that go through that process, so there's no fine that would be imposed or assessment with the, this security enhancement fee. But certainly, somebody who comes in, is charged with something, and then leaves acquitted wouldn't have any assessment.
What's the amount, what's the dollar amount you expect to raise from this over a year?
So, if you took the current Justice Court cost recovery fee, this previous fiscal year was just over $300,000, and that's a $20 fee. So, if you were to, say, have that same amount, right, the $60 fee would bring in about $900,000.
So, you already have the cost recovery fee of $20. Is that what you're getting rid of in item 10? Is that my understanding? It seems like that was getting rid of that.
It wouldn't get rid of it. Item number 10 would be a revision of it to use it for other purposes. This, the current, last year, we paid 400, a little over $450,000 towards court security in a fund that only brought in $300,000. So, eventually, that fund's going to run out of money, and that's a decision for the Board. Do you want the general fund to assume all that, or do you want a fee that you're allowed to have to help defray the cost towards taxpayers?
Because it would seem that that, I mean, the security would be like here, where it's the cost of doing business, so I don't see putting that on the backs of more people that can't really afford to pay it when I know that it goes to collections at some point, and now you charge a, I forget what the percentage is that you charge, and also possibly put a lien toward the title of the car where they can't re-register their car, so then they can't go to work, consequently, can't pay their bill, so it just, it just seems like it's just down the toilet spiral to me.
I don't mean to chuckle because, Mr. Supervisor McClure, but that's not me. I'm not doing those.
No, I'm not saying that you are doing that. I'm just saying that that is, that seems to be the general direction that this goes.
So, when people are non-compliant, right, we don't just, during collections, you go through this process. I don't know if you received a copy of the answer that I provided. There's a whole mitigation process. We ask people to come in, they're summoned to come in for an order to show cause hearing. Hey, you haven't been compliant with the court mandates, right? One of them could be the fine. Why? They could have some great reasons for that. They lost their job, they're having financial difficulty, but that's a decision for the court to make at the time with that individual, right? Whether we're going to mitigate those fines, do community service in lieu of the fines. People who go into that collection status or have, and have their registration hold placed through FAIR, which is fines and restitution enforcement, are people who don't respond to those requests to come in and talk about it. I always explain to people, hey, you're on a payment contract. If you default on this, this is what can happen. And so, if you run into issues, communicate with the court prior to your case being defaulted. But we go through a process to try to get them to come in and tell us what's going on.
I get that. I appreciate that. Thank you. But, so, in the cost recovery, now you've got $20, and it's $300,000 a year roughly. How much of that is actually collected as opposed to how much is turned over to community service where you don't receive any funding? Again, general fund picks that up, I believe. What's kind of, in your, you know, I'm not going to hold you to a percentage, but roughly, what kind of percentage is recovered now?
I wouldn't even give you an answer, Supervisor McClure, because I'd be guessing, and I don't want to do that.
Okay.
So, there's not a good way for me to know. You could be on a payment contract, be compliant, and still not have paid the, that cost recovery fee, right? There's a pecking order in terms of the fines, the fees, that when you make a payment, that comes out on the receipt. First thing would be restitution. So, say somebody's got $10,000 in restitution for contracting without a license charge. Every payment that's made, 100% of that goes to restitution until that's paid in full. Secondary to restitution, if it is in a collection status, would be the $45 fee to be in that collections process. And then would be a time payment fee. Then it would be any local kind of fee. So, that's jail fees, right? We assess a fee for somebody to be in the jail, which we don't have to, right? If you don't want us to do that as well. But it could be the cost recovery fee. It could be attorney's fees for the appointment of the public defender that they get. We have them fill out a financial statement form to see their ability to pay. That's often waived, but it could be assessed. So, those come out, and then fines, there's other surcharges from the state that come after that as well. So, there's no good way for me to say, hey, this is how much is outstanding in terms of that cost recovery fee. Most people who don't come in, they're on a warrant status on a criminal case, or they're just defaulted on a civil traffic. There's no means for us to pull somebody in on a civil traffic case, right? I can't say, hey, how come you haven't been doing this, right? The civil traffic case, it's, once it's done, it's done.
And the security that you're talking about, is that for personnel, or is this electronic, or all the above?
It would be to secure the facility, the staff that works in the facility, and the public that comes to our facility.
So, I mean, my personal feeling, I mean, would be that it's, you know, it's the cost of doing business would be added to the budget and then carried, and not put that on the backs of those that already cannot afford it, and it just creates this downward spiral. That's my opinion, so, it's my opinion because I'm saying it, so, but anyway, there we go.
Mr. Chair, if I might, you and I are on-
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Supervisor Goodman.
Okay. You and I are on opposite pages on this one, because I think accountability is a big part of what needs to happen, and I, and I come from a family of judges, particularly in the Justice of the Peace Courts, and I've seen both my father and my brother in action, very compassionate. They're voted by the citizens, and they're members of our communities that serve in these positions right here. They, they take into consideration, I've been in Judge Babu's office, not professionally-
Oh, I've been there too. You talk. No, I-
But I've seen him in action, and I've seen other judges in our community in action and the compassion that they have. They have the ability to work with the individual, and if the individuals, and this I have, my dad had me sit in jail one evening.
Oh, I've heard this.
You've heard the story, and so, but that's because of accountability that I had to take upon, and I had to pay those fines. And so, and, and security, especially in our environment today, shouldn't be necessarily on the back of the taxpayers. It's, it should be the responsibility of those that are actually going there, and you've already heard him say, that if you are acquitted, or whatever the case may be, they don't have the fine to pay. And you, we've heard them say that they'll help pay for that. So, I'm in agreement with this.
Well, I mean, I was just saying, I mean, not to, you know, make light of it, but I mean, let's charge them five bucks a piece to walk through the door because we're paying for the deputies to be here. So, you know, it's the same thing. I look at it as a cost, as a cost of doing business, and I'm fined for securing them, but I think that that's not something that needs to go on there. If not, all the fines are being paid, or if they've got this backlog of fines that aren't being paid, the taxpayer's still paying them, and it's a pretty small number when you look at it in big picture of what our costs are.
But you've already heard that we only had $300,000 from the fees that was paid, and we had a $450,000 bill. So, we've been paying for that, a portion of that. And I think it's only fair that the individuals that are going to the court, and if they're found guilty, that they pay their portion at court because of the necessity of that. And I can see here, this is a public setting. That's not necessarily a public setting when you go to the court. You're going there for a very distinct, and, and a fine, you being accused of something, and you're going to that court system for that. It's a different setting here, but I see where there should be some type of, where they're responsible for making some payments on that.
Sure. I guess I look at it in the aspect of, you know, like you said, somebody walking in here charging $5 or whatever the number may be. I look at it this way. I would love to know how many are repeat offenders over and over again, or continuing for these fines to continue to keep going up, to make these people walk through the door, that the security needs to be safer. It's kind of like touching the stove. You touch it once, you touch it twice. How many times before you learn your lesson that you're not going to be speeding, or whatever the cases may be? So, I'm actually in agreement with Mr. Goodman in the aspect of, people make mistakes, and I agree with that, but how many more times do you make mistakes that all these good citizens who come here have to keep paying for it? And again, I understand what you're saying, but I think, again, learn your lesson. So, I'm actually in a group, I know we'll take a vote on it, but thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just, I know there was reference in terms of the security cost. The, that $450,000 is just for one security officer in each of our courts. We have two, so you're really talking about a $900,000 bill associated with court security that we're paying in the justice courts. This is just a portion where the other, that $300,000 was coming in from the previous, or the current cost recovery.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So, for logistics here, I do need to open up the public hearing, so I'm opening up the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this? And it's for both 10 and 11? They can comment, or just 11?
Only on number 11, Chairman.
On 11 right now. Okay. Please come forth, your name, chair and location.
I would be on Team McClure here, but I think my real thing is that it seems to me that it's, like, we're talking about different things. We're talking about support for the, the people that are running the system, the judges, that thing, and then we're talking about deterrence. Does this fine actually keep anybody from not offending again? And then, beyond that, beyond that, isn't that, isn't that something associated with a guilty finding that implies that there is punishment? I mean, it seems like double punishment. Not only are you doing what, whatever the court decides you're going to do because you offended, you're also paying. And that's all, and I'm not hugely invested in this issue because I don't know that much about it, but in general, I think there are two things, and I would, if I were in your place, I'd want a little more information before I do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on item number 11? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and, and we're going to do 11, then we're going to jump back up to 10. Is that correct? Okay. So, the Board's pleasure on item number 11.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it. Thank you. 4-1. Okay, now we will go to item number 10, and I, just some clarity, because I think this question kind of popped up earlier. This is to repeal and replace the revised ordinance. So, it does have a repeal kind of component to it, but I suspect it's just the text that's being repealed.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sean Babu serves as the Presiding Justice of the Peace for Pinal County. I think that verbiage is from the county attorney, civil attorney that was working with us for this. When this was- When this was first passed, right, it was a justice court cost recovery fee. Then it became a revised fee, but it only revised certain provisions of the first one. So there's, really, there were two that we were having to look at to get all the components of the cost recovery ordinance, right? So this would have been, if we continued with it, we would have had it been amending the other two, right? And then adding these, this third one. So I think it was just repeal those and replace it with this ordinance, which is the 10125JC01. Now, it's the same ordinance, the revisions that would be here. The non-sufficient fund fee for criminal, criminal traffic, civil traffic cases would be amended from $25 to $33. And that's so that it mirrors the, the non-sufficient fund fee on civil cases that we passed previously and that the Supreme Court has instituted in terms of the civil fees. It would also shift the focus of this fund from court security, which it's, we were paying, we brought in 300, 450 was coming out of that fund. It would shift it away from court security costs, allow the justice courts to use the fund for operating expenses, improve case processing. This was also presented on September 10th, 2025 at that work session with no requested revisions. The public comment period was held. It was properly advertised and there was that one comment that I responded to in writing.
Okay, any, any questions for the Chair or for the?
For what's his name there? Judge, thank you. The NSF charge is, just mirrors what the banks charge. I mean, because they're $33 or $35, something like that. It's just, it's just upgrading that.
I don't know what the banks charge. I haven't had one. But it mirrors in terms of statute allows for civil fees. Back years ago, the Board of Supervisors at that time had approved for, I forget the name of the ordinance, but it allows for a research fee, right? So when somebody comes in to ask for, hey, I want you to get me this file, that file, that file, you're able to charge a fee associated with that for the work that goes into getting those things. We'll have lots of companies that'll call because they're doing background checks on individuals for employment purposes. They'll get charged for that. And we already changed the non-sufficient fund fee for civil cases. This just mirrors it now so we don't have, oh, is this a criminal case? It's 25, this one's 35. We can just say non-sufficient fund fee is $33.
So the $20 you were charging for, for the cost recovery for, for security is left in this to cover admin costs?
Correct.
All you did is just add another $60 on with the revision.
There'd be a, still the same fund, but that ordinance that just passed in terms of that $60, when it goes in place and there's money generated there, the ordinance directs the Budget and Finance Department to create a separate cost center within that fund so that that $60 goes solely there in, for court security.
But my, my point is that the $20 that was there is still there. It's just being used as administrative coverage.
Yes, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Good. Any more questions? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing component of this. Anybody from the public want to speak to this item? Come forth, say your name and general location where you live.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Barry McCain from Miracopa. I did security for high-level people in Pentagon. And it's like, and I think that it's nothing outrageous about what Mr. Bev Yu was saying. Because you have to worry about the cost, you know? Security is not just for that paperwork. You have to pay for that. That costs money. So I don't think he's out asking anything outrageous. Just out of thought, not 20 years doing security for the United States Navy. I understand that, but you still got to, that cost that comes in. And I appreciate Supervisor Goodman because, you know, I, I'm just not one of those, one of those people that is, as political when it comes to, but there, there's a cost that we have to, we have to recover, right? Because there's a lot more to security and the paperwork is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak to this item? Item number 10. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve item 10 as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close saying nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to item number 12 on the agenda. Approval or disapproval of a donation agreement between Pinell County and the City of Eloy regarding donations of a, looks like a piece of property. Who have up here? Joe?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Development Services Managing Director. Yes, this is a, item 12 is an action item with no public hearing component needed. But yes, it is a donation agreement between Pinell County and the City of Eloy regarding the donation of 707 West Third Place, Eloy. This is a parcel that has been leased for approximately 25 years plus with the City of Eloy and they've been using it at that point in time and even today as a public works maintenance yard, mainly just more of a staging area for equipment and some materials that they've, they've needed. It's in the heart of Eloy. Pinell County Public Works doesn't have any need for it, never have. So like I said, it's more of a cleanup item, getting it converted out of a lease and getting it donated to them.
Okay. Any questions? Joe? Hearing none. Board's pleasure. You need a roll call? Do you want a roll call?
Yes, this is unanimous, but.
This needs a unanimous?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 12 as, as presented.
Yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close saying nay.
Thank you.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number 13. It does have a public hearing component to it. It's a resolution of Pinell County Board of Supervisors approving additional of section weight limits for special county highways.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Say this to me.
Celeste Garza, Deputy Director of Public Works. Item 13 is an addition of specific county highways to a county ordinance that was adopted in 2002, authorizing the imposition of weight limits on particular highways. Under ARS 281106, local authorities may restrict truck and commercial vehicle operations and impose these weight limits as long as we place signage identifying those limits. Roadways, these are, weight sanctioned roadways are those that have set a legal maximum vehicle weight limit due to engineering evaluations. The reason we put these in place is because roads are showing accelerated wear. They're just not made for designated heavy trucks. They protect the roadways from premature damage. They reduce costs and maintenance for us, the public. They improve the safety of users and they extend the usable life of the roadways. These vehicle limits, these vehicles exceeding these limits are subject to enforcement and penalties. Today, before you, in the resolution, there's five different roadways. Three of those are in District 2. One of those is in District 4. And then one bridge structure is in District 5. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Public Works. Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing component. Anybody from the public want to speak to item number 13? Seeing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 13 as presented.
Seconds. A lot of seconds going on, but anyway. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close saying nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Number 14 has a public hearing component to it. It's discussion approval or disapproval of Boardance Number 2025, PCPD 008-25. And who's presenting?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors. My name is Alton Panchenko, Planner for the case PCPD 00825, the village at Pecan Grove. That's a major amendment to previously approved PED overlay zone. That's located next to the Encontara, north of Encontara. And it's at East Combs Road and North Encontara Drive in San Tan Valley. There is a landowner, Desert Sage Management, applicant, the village at Pecan Grove LLC and agent representative upfront planning and entitlement LLC, represented today by Jessica Sarkisian. Here's a general location of the property. Here's a zoning. It's MR, surrounded by other residential subdivisions around that with some commercial to the east. Here's vicinity map. Here's aerial map. Currently swak and here's a view for the property to the west and to the east. Here's to the north and to the south. To the north, it's on the site. Here's the notice of the sign for the Board of Supervisors, public hearings. Briefly about the history of the site. It was originally approved with CR5 zoning. In 2003, there was a PED approved and relocated 26 acres to CIB Industrial Buffer. It's larger parcel. And then in 2021, there was another zone change with PED. Now it was resoned for CR5, from CR5 to MR, multiple residence zoning district. And at that point of time, the case was presented and advertiseded for the development as a single-story for leased residency facility, but it wasn't included in the stipulation. So the single-story was not included in stipulation, but it was advertiseded as a single-story. So generally, speaking about the access to this property, there will be two access points. From the east portion, there will, there will be a major gate entry and to the south to East Combs Road. Generally about the major PED amendment. So the applicant proposing to slightly adjust density, increase it from 10.29 dwelling units per acre to 10.43 dwelling units per acre. That's represented by keeping 100 single-story units as it was previously done and then converting 47 single-story units to 49 two-story units. So in total, they will have 149 units compared to previously approved 147. And those 47 change it to 49 two-story units. So that's a major change with this PED. There was also a request to slightly reduce the minimum land area for dwelling units from 4,232 square feet to 4,175 square feet. And there are also some building height modification from 20 feet to 28 feet to accommodate the proposed two-story residential. And that's compared to PED book, what was written in PED book. Don, MR zone allow height to 36 feet. So it's still under allow it for this zoning district. Here is a site plan that is proposed right now with layout for one-story building and two-story buildings on the edges of the property to the east and to the west, those small dark brown units. Here's previously approved plan, only one-story buildings. And here for comparison, approved and proposed as of today. They will keep the same circulation within the complex. They will add some open space trails to the north and to the east of the property. They've slightly rearranged different units. And those two stories building will be allocated to the east and to the west of the site. There is also, to the east of this parcel, there is assisted living, planted and approved two-story partially. It was already approved by the board this year. There is also, to the west, there is other residential development and they have also partially two-story buildings as well. So here is just major highlights about the distribution of proposed changes, how the applicant would like to change it. They will still keep all open space. They will keep parking requirements over their county requirement. They also have 25-foot landscape buffer to the south from East Combs Road and they will provide six-foot CMU wall. At that time of the report and as of today, there is no letter of support or opposition for this case. There was an agency reach out to us from APCOR regarding that site plan approval will require review by APCOR because it's a zone for limited wastewater service area. And we included that into the stipulation. So it will be required on the site plan review. We also included into that stipulation that City of Queen Creek Water Service, they will also need to review that and provide their response and review for the site plan. General summary, that was already spoken about. There was, during the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was stipulation number 11. It was amended because even on the time of original approval of PED, that road, East Combs portion, that was already dedicated to the town of Queen Creek. So it was, we changed it, that stipulation as well. So it will reflect that it should be dedicated to the town of Queen Creek, not the Pinell County. And there is 14 stipulation for this case. I'm glad to answer questions from the board.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair. I, I guess the question I have is now the logistics of all of this. I believe this is in the new town limits, correct?
Yes, correct.
Do they need to, is there anything that they need to be involved in on this?
Well, I, I don't think so. I'm looking at counsel here.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, not at this time. My understanding is that this was submitted prior to the incorporation and the, the attorney that worked on this is present. He may have additional information, but my understanding is no at this time. Let me just look for confirmation.
And this may be a broader question for any and all projects that are underway. And at some point, the roadways and stuff will be transferred into this.
Yeah, we'll be handing those over. But I'm just, in regards to the, what we're doing here.
Chairman, Supervisors, I apologize for the delay on that. So this has not come up before in terms of any questions regarding the effect of the incorporation on this area. The counsel for the San Tan Valley Incorporators has not contacted anyone in, in Pinell County staff about this matter. My understanding is based on the timeline that. My understanding is based on the timeline that when this was submitted and approved and the subsequent recommendation that it's not affected by the incorporation. However, that's only my understanding at this time. Frankly, I don't know the answer to that question.
And, Mr. Chair, if I might--
Sure, go ahead.
One of the council members actually sits on our Planning and Zoning Committee. So I know that that one individual is where, and obviously he approved it, but I'm just curious, is where do we, especially not just this case, but like Supervisor Miller said, moving forward?
Probably dozen cases or more.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
And Chairman, Members of the Board, we definitely recognize that this is a global issue that we do need to get some certainty on, and we will be doing that immediately because we understand there are more projects in the pipeline.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Actually, that was the same question I was going to ask, but the other questions I was going to ask is I noticed we're going down as low as forty-one hundred square-foot lots, is that correct?
What's apartment complex?
Yes, so forty-one, four thousand one hundred seventy-five square feet, that's minimum lot size for the dwelling unit, for the dwelling units, not for the lot. That will be one lot for the dwelling units. But it is reduction from four thousand two hundred thirty-two that was previously approved.
I'm not suggesting that it's, if I might, still Supervisor, Chair.
Well--
I mean, do we, do we even deliberate this? Yeah.
Trying to play this out in my head a little bit. If we were to approve it, what happens? If the new city council says, well, we didn't want that? I guess that's a scenario that--
We need to get an answer.
Horse has left the barn, I think, you know, kind of thing.
That's going to come up over and over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman, Members of the Board, out of an abundance of caution, I would recommend tabling this issue until we can contact the attorney for the town of Santan Valley just to see what their input is on this issue, if in fact it is impacted because of the incorporation. Because like the, like you all said, this will come up repeatedly.
Is the--
What about--
Is there anybody from, is the, is the client here, or I mean, the people?
Yeah.
Is it you, Jessica? Okay. Jessica? Oh, there you are, I see your name now. Can you step up?
Hello. Thank you. Jessica Sarkisian Upfront Planning, representing the client here. Yeah, I just want to remind, as Supervisor Goodman mentioned, the, one of the town council members for Santan was on the commission, or I don't know if he still is, he was on the commission that we presented to, and he did recommend approval. We've been in talks with, you know, the surrounding property owners and all that stuff. And then also as a reminder, I believe, since they do not have any processes in place, there is no, I believe they're supposed to go through the county process until they actually create all those things. So rather than putting things in limbo, that was, I believe, the avenue that the county was directed, but you can clarify on things like that. So, and so with this, I wanted to just go over that this is an existing PED, so fourteen point two eight acres. I actually did the two properties still left, so I created my own neighbors to talk about things. So it is a currently PAD MR, so they would be just bringing over when they incorporate, like zoning, they would follow the existing zoning. It's a minor plan amendment to do two additional units with a two-story option. The existing, as he mentioned, is one hundred forty-seven units, so you can see a little bit bigger. This is the existing plan. And then this is the proposed plan. So it is more of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. When the original PAD was done, there was a different trend in study of economics and what's demanded in this area. And since then, because there was some concern at the commission meeting, also just wanted to recognize that this traffic study was updated in two thousand and twenty-five with the new market study and everything like that. So that is what we're doing here. So here you can see the difference. It's kind of hard to see. But, but they are adding the two units and they are adding two stories. And so I want to talk to you about the neighborhood meeting. So we did have the neighborhood meeting, we had people from Encontara come out, people from Pecan Cove to the other, to the west as well come out and state their concerns, and they, we actually did change some of the orientation of the two stories so that they were siding. And we, and if you can kind of see the two stories, we lined up against existing two stories. So if there's not two stories looking in, our one stories and things like that. So we were very cognizant of that. And at the top left, you can see, we originally had them all backing onto the two-story, but they asked us to side it, and so we changed that. And so here's the change. You can see, here's the Combs Road streetscape, that has not changed. We're remaining everything the same as was in the original PAD, with the exception of adding the two stories. And then the minimum land dwelling unit, just to accommodate for the two stories, which become on a smaller lot. The open space and all that stuff is the same. So these are, this is the architecture that was previously approved in the PAD, which is existing. And so this is the change of the two-story, just to show you what it looks like. And then this is, you can see as it relates to the surrounding properties. So we've lined up as much as we can with all the two stories on the adjacent property. We had them show up to the neighborhood meeting. Here is the neighborhood meeting. We discussed everything, their concerns, actually the top left, where they were the ones that had concerns about what the neighbors might see into their yard. So we changed the layout a little bit for them. But we didn't have any opposition. We haven't had any letters of concern, staff is supportive. And then here's the neighborhood meeting sign-ins. You can see a little more of the landscaping, how the landscaping goes against the west side and around the property, expanding a little bit of the open space. And then, and that's, that's really what it is. It's, so it's the existing PAD is on, is in place for one hundred forty-seven units, and then we're just requesting to add two stories and two units. The commission voted eight to one in approval. The one was just a, I can't, I can't think of it, what his name was right now. But it was just a issue of, he just didn't feel he wanted for leased product. But this is a highly, between the market studies, this is what's being needed in the area, and it is detached units, so it's highly likely to do very well in this area, as the other properties have. No neighbors have been present in opposition, and staff does support the project. But yeah, I guess it's, you guys can decide how you want to deal with the Santan issue. But I do say that we did our, we did our neighborhood outreach. You know, we've done it several, for both commission and for supervisors. One of the existing town council members was on the commission, present, made his comments known. And then there's, there are no processes in place for Santan Valley right now, so they kind of default on you guys.
Mr. Chair.
I just, the financial side of this thing is crucial in my mind, that's, but that's how my brain works, so. Anyway, to stop this thing in the middle, go ahead.
I totally agree. But at the same time, I just, I noticed that we had a group of them in the back there of our staff, pow, while we, should we go into executive session?
You want to go into exec session?
Chairman, Members of the Board, that would be my recommendation. It should not take long.
Okay. Mr. Chair, could I make a motion then that we go into executive session?
You certainly can. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Go into exec session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll be back.
We created a can of worms.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to just recess the exec session. We'll have another exec session here in a little bit. Come back to order in the Board of Supervisors meeting. Okay, we got clarity on item fourteen. I need to open the public hearing, correct? Opening the public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment.
Sure.
I mean, I know it's by statute, could, for clarification, because this is going to come over and over about Santan Valley, could we have the statute read by council just to say, this is what and why we're doing this? Yeah, or nah, I'm not saying we're doing either way, but--
No, and I think, I do think, because it will--
It'll come up.
It establishes the procedure moving forward. Okay.
Chairman, Members of the Board, the statute in question is nine dash one zero four, particularly subsection A, and it reads as follows. "When county territory is included within the boundaries of a newly incorporated city or town, all codes, rules, and regulations made, established, adopted, or enacted by such county relating to zoning, building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and health and sanitation shall apply within such newly incorporated city or town and shall be enforced by county officers from and after the date of such incorporation until July first, next following such incorporation, or until such time prior to the expiration of such fiscal year as the governing body of such city or town by resolution or conflicting ordinance supersedes such county code, rules, or regulations." So based on that statute, Santan Valley, they have incorporated, however, they are still subject to the county codes, ordinances, et cetera, that are still on the books. However, part of my hesitation was I did not know if the Santan Valley Council has adopted anything at this point in time. My understanding is that they have not, so the county codes, rules, and regulations continue to apply until that deadline of July first, or otherwise adopted, or something else is adopted by the council.
They officially adopt something else, okay. All right, everybody clear, everybody good with this?
Yes.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number fourteen as presented with fourteen stipulations.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number fifteen, does have a public hearing component to it, but we'll have a presentation first, and this is a decision approval or disapproval of ordinance number two zero two five, PZ zero one four dash two five. An ordinance approving case number, wow.
Go forth.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Commission. My name is Justin Mullis, Planner of Pinell County. I'll be presenting the all PZ zero one four two five. This proposal is a request to rezone approximately twenty-four point two three acres from GR General Rule to I two, Light Industrial and Warehouse District. This rezone proposal is with no plans at present to develop the property. The location is southeast of South Treacle Road and West Corman Road, and the owner and applicant are Tim and Shirley Tate. The owner, and my apologies, the applicant is Rick Miller on their behalf, and the supervisor district is District Three. Here's a location map showing the property's approximate location. You can see it is south across the Grande and is right along that I eight corridor. Here is the case zoning map. We have the case map on the left, but I wanted to include that map on the right that shows some updated zoning. You can see to the south, parcels were just recently rezoned in two thousand and fifteen from MH, CB two, and GR, and those were all rezoned to I two, which is what this is being proposed to be rezoned to as well. You can see as well, it is surrounded by GR to the west and north, as well as CB two that read to the west. Here's an aerial map showing the property. It's currently vacant and undeveloped. Here's some aerial, photographs from the site to the north, views to the south, to the east, and to the west. You see largely undeveloped, as well as some rural uses in the surrounding areas. So my items of consideration, as stated before, there are no plans to develop this property at this moment. The applicant has stated that the site will remain maintained but vacant for the foreseeable future. The subject site is designated by the Comprehensive Plan under the employment designation. The parcels directly to the south, as stated before, were rezoned to I two from their various zoning for the use and development of industrial complex. Additionally, another item of consideration to note is the location along the I eight corridor. In addition to those rezones, we've seen significant development towards employment uses and industrial uses in that area. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to forward a recommendation of approval with six stipulations, and at this time, no letters of opposition have been received. And going off of that last note, while we have not received any letters of opposition, we have received three letters of support. Those letters have been from surrounding property owners, and those letters predominantly discuss alignment with uses on the I eight corridor, the alignment with the comprehensive employment designation, and general growth patterns in this area. And with that, any questions for the staff at this time?
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask, this can't become, just want to make sure I got this correct, could not become a dump zone, you know, could not become a dump or anything like that, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to just make a comment at this point in time. This, this hard zoning on a piece of property like this, I think is the way we need to go in the future. This is, this gives a lot of flexibility to potential users on how they may approach that, and this is absolutely, the corridor, it's kind of the entrance into the industrial area of the Casa Grande area, so applaud the owners for taking this action, and I look forward to something happening there someday that'll be very beneficial to not just the county, but to the city as well. The applicant here to do a presentation, or?
Yes, sir, the applicant is in attendance. We do have a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Rick Miller, Land to Plan LLC. We're very supportive of the Planning Commission's recommendation, have no recommendation to approve this rezoning request. We agree with the stipulations that they have suggested, be happy to answer any questions you have, we don't have any formal presentation of them, what you've seen.
Okay. Any questions?
Just that he's slightly familiar, I'm not sure who he is.
Just might want to say that.
Call each other brother, so.
There's no conflict. Chairman Miller and I are not related.
Our birthdays are one day apart. Both of our wives are named Lori. After that, it gets kind of crazy.
Brother from another mother, okay. Okay, you're creeping me out now, now I don't want to--
All right.
Thank you.
I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. The Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item fifteen as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Chairman.
Open the public hearing or close the public hearing?
No, that was supposed to be with--
So I'm sorry, I will amend my, my motion to appease the clerk of the board. I move that we approve item fifteen as presented with six stipulations.
Does the second agree with that?
Second.
Okay, okay. Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. Thank you. Brings us to item number sixteen. It does have a public hearing component as well. So this is case number CSR zero one four dash two four.
Good morning, again, Chairman, Members of the Board. I'll be presenting CSR fourteen twenty-four. This proposal is a comprehensive sign package to allow for the installation of three double-sided monument signs with a maximum of three hundred and fifteen square feet and thirty-one wall signs with a sign area maximum of three thousand nine hundred sixty-eight square feet within a commercial complex. The applicant is pursuing this sign package to provide commercial tenants with more signage than is currently permitted by the code.
On sixteen, okay.
The location of this site is north, is at the northeast corner of North Gansel Road and El Parque Lane in Santan Valley. The landowners are TCCC Taraza LLC and the agent-- The landowners are TCC Taraza LLC, and the agent applicant is Ken Franzen on behalf of Boots and Duke Signs. Here's the county map showing the approximate location just east of Queen Creek in the Santan Valley area. Here we have the vicinity map, pardon me. You can see it is in that CB two zoning with similar CB two zoning to the north, as well as MR to the south, that brown, to the east, there is that CR three, as well as SR to the west. And here's an aerial showing that's currently undeveloped at this time, though the applicant is, has a completed site plan already. Here is the site plan map for the signage. You can see in the red, two monument signs south of Gansel Road, as well as that third monument sign off of El Parque Lane, and as well in the red dotted outline, those are the buildings which would have those wall signage previously mentioned. On the left side of the screen, we have highlighted in yellow that building's proposed wall signage. The south elevation has the two signs in the middle, those lengthwise longer ones, and additionally, two more on the right side of the southern elevation. The north elevation has those two signs as outlined there, as well as one at the center, and the west elevation has that large banner sign at the top of the property. Moving to the right side of the screen, that highlighted portion has, again, those signage areas as outlined in red, the two on each side, as well as the one at the center, the topmost picture. And here we have the southern two buildings, their proposed wall signage, you can see those long wall signs on the south elevation, two of them on the west elevation, and three on the, or my apologies, that's building four, west elevation, below that, building five, west elevation. And then lastly, that centermost building, multiple wall signs along each elevation. Here's what the code currently permits, one wall sign per elevation for each tenant. Example, if there are three tenants on one elevation, each tenant will be allowed one wall sign, so you can see that this proposal significantly exceeds that, as well as it exceeds the maximum square footage per tenant as well. And here we have the example imagery of the three monument signs. Those would include the tenant nameplates about twelve feet high, listing off each tenant there. Those are also in excess of the current allowance for monument signage. And on that monument signage allowance, we have here one sign, minimum of three hundred feet of arterial major collecting street frontage, as well as the wall signage area that's allowed. This, this is in excess of that as well. Some items of consideration, the application is for approval of sign package CSR fourteen twenty-four. The request would be permitting three hundred and fifteen square feet for the double-sided monument signs, three thousand nine hundred sixty-eight for the wall signs. For CB two parcels, the maximum allowance of square footage is a hundred and twenty-eight, so this is in significant excess of that, though it's, given that it is this medical office complex area, it has unique circumstances, given the multiple tenants, as well as our current code specifies that multiple tenants occupying one building are counted as one tenant, and therefore, they're restricted further in wall signage, so this would be allowing those multiple tenant buildings as well to have increased signage. The applicant's currently pursuing building permits for a medical office complex. The site plan has already been approved under SPR ninety-five twenty-three. And the sign review committee has voted two to one to issue a recommendation of approval for CSR fourteen twenty-four as presented with three stipulations. Any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions for staff? Does the applicant have a presentation, or are they here?
No presentation from the applicant. We have the applicant.
We have, we want to open up a public comment, but is this the applicant?
Yeah, I'm actually the applicant for Boots and Duke Sign Company, and the owner, the person representing Taraza Plaza, the ownership, Ken, is also here.
Okay.
Hello.
Okay, are you speaking, are you doing a presentation, or is this part of your public comment period?
You know what, go ahead.
I could go ahead and speak onto it a little bit. I don't think we're asking for, when it showed those, where the signs will go, excuse me, but we're not proposing for that to be all signage, what we're saying is that could be where the sign is located. What we're actually saying is if a, the, the frontage of their particular suite, if it was, say, fifty feet long, we're allowing, we're asking for the allowance of one square foot for every one linear foot of signage, with a maximum up to, if the building was a hundred and thirty feet long, a maximum aggregate of all signage on that building to only be a hundred and thirty feet. So what we're saying is that could be where the signs were located, but not necessarily that we could fill that with signs.
Yeah. And you don't know how many tenants, or?
We don't.
Yeah, so you need some flexibility on that.
Yeah, so the way the code reads, they're saying that they're, they consider the building because like, like a lot of medical facilities, where you have one entrance where you go in, and they're, and the actual entrances to the different services have separate doors, but they're inside the building, but because there's only one main entrance, they're only allowing one sign, which is why we're asking for more above and beyond the code. With the five buildings on the property, we do believe it's essential for these different services in the medical community to be able to, to correct, you know, communicate to the public as they're trying to come into the facility, where they're located and where these services are.
Okay.
As you know, this, this twelve acres.
Please identify yourself, I need you, I need.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, my name is Ken Franzen, so I represent TCC Taraza and Tri-City Cardiology. We're the developer of this property, and so, and I'm out of Queen Creek, Arizona, and so I have a vested interest in this, and we want to make this very convenient for patients of your county, so that as they come here for specialty services, anything from oncology, cardiology, orthopedics, et cetera, that they can locate easily those services in the building. And many of our patients aren't going to be seniors, they're not going to want to park their car at the wrong building, get out, go in and look for a building directory inside the building, only to find that they're on the wrong building. So we need to have good signage on the side of the buildings, in addition to kind of steerage signage throughout the, the campus is what we call it. We also will have the buildings color-coded to actually give them further direction of, it's the blue building, et cetera. So we're doing our very best to make sure that we get patients to the right place and the right building the first time, and not have them just continually navigate throughout the property. And so, we just need the flexibility on the signage to make sure we get it on the right side for the right group that is the right tenant, and that there's less confusion for the patient. That's really the goal.
Okay. Chairman, I got a quick. First, first person, please identify yourself and where you live, or generally where you live.
My name is Chris Totten, and I'm with Boots and Duke Sign Company out of Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay, Chris, thank you.
And actually, our project, I was just going to mention, our project is already.
It's already up and running.
It's already up and running, we're, I think we've got one building just about forty, fifty percent complete, two-story building. We've got two buildings, two buildings going.
Wish you all the best, because I think we've heard numerous times that there's not enough medical.
Amen on that one.
Okay. And I'm pro sign. I, I like signs, I don't think there's enough signs sometimes, because they work three, twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five, and you don't have to pay them. So, anyway, that's what I love about them. Did somebody?
I just wanted to ask, so you're asking for multiple signs on each side of each building. Will these all be lit signs? I mean, again, we don't want this thing looking like Vegas.
They're not, oh, go ahead.
So we do have, based on management approval, we are advocating for either a lit or unlit sign, depending on the direction that it's facing. And again, all of this will have to go through the approval process of management.
So, so it won't be stacked signs all on top of each, I, because I understand what kind of building this is. The monument sign, I hundred percent agree with, but again, I was just wondering, if you've got five on one side, seven on one side, are you going to have all these signs stacked all top on each other? Is that what you're?
No, sir, that's why you see on those elevations where we're showing where they're allowed to put a sign.
Okay, so, all right, so it'll be like three, okay, gotcha, okay.
We are trying to maintain a design, you know, aesthetics to it, so it'll, you know, be cohesive and.
I just don't want it to look like Vegas.
Right.
No, there, it will not be bright, obnoxious signage and lighting. Usually, it's backlit, it's very low-key. You know, the, the campus, it's not working at seven, eight at night, you know, it's typically an eight to five type campus, so.
And we do have restrictions inside the sign plan.
Yeah.
For, to, to limit them from certain things.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, being an individual that's entered the realm of needing to go to doctors regularly, Supervisor Miller, you would understand that?
I do.
I've gone into the Queen Creek campus right there by the hospital, and it is, half the time, my urologist moved from one building to another building, and I have a difficult time locating where they're at, and you can't find them. And so, I would recommend, not only, which you'll see where I'm going to go with this, but the bottom line is, we probably ought to look at our sign packages a total anyway, because we've had how many of these come before us, and so, so I look at this, and I'm thinking this is a needed necessity to help us older people find our location. You said that very politely, by the way.
Tri-City Cardiology has been in this valley for fifty years, and we have offices that have signs and offices that do not, and so we can share with you the complaints, and it's in the offices that do not.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor, certing.
I think you answered the question about, when you started talking about lighting, you said it's only going to be backlit.
Backlit.
And I see Dedrick in the back of the room, and we're currently working on dark skies in our ordinances, so we do need to look at, yes, we want signs, but we don't want to affect, you know, we want, we want to stay dark skies compliant.
We, there are limitations in here on the types of lighting that they're allowed to use, for that reason.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So, both of you filled out a card, one wanted to speak and the other didn't, and they both, and you both have spoke, so. I'm going to, I'm going to open up the public hearing, if you want to continue to speak, I guess you're entitled to, but.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So let me open up the public hearing on this item. Item number seventeen is, which one am I on? Actually, sixteen, I'm sorry. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number sixteen with three stipulations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Item number seventeen is, does have a public hearing component as well. This is the Living Word Chapel. Who's here to present? Okay.
Good morning again, Chairman, members of the board. I'll be presenting CSR zero zero seven two five. This proposal is to allow the installation of one double-sided electronic message board. The total sign area of the board would be seventy-one square feet for the Living Word Chapel. The applicant is pursuing this sign package to allow for electronic message components that the sign currently does not permit, except under flexibility provisions. The parcel number is listed there, and the address is three nine four one West Highway seventy-seven, out in Oracle, located approximately fourteen hundred feet from the intersection of West Highway seventy-seven and West Linda Vista Road. And the landowner and applicant is Living Word Chapel, represented by Becca Simmons, who is in attendance today. Here's the county map showing the approximate location. You can see it's down there in Oracle, just east or west of Mammoth. The vicinity map here, you can see its proximity to Oracle, as well as its location adjacent to Highway seventy-seven. Here, the aerial map as well, you can see its proximity to Highway seventy-seven, as well as the surrounding parcels. Currently, the Living Word Chapel is in operation on that parcel, surrounded by the, I believe it's a Ford dealership to the north, as well as some other commercial uses in the area, and other vacant rural areas as well. Here we have the zoning map. The parcel's current zoning is CB two, to the north and the east are similarly zoned CB two parcels, as well as GR and state lands surrounding the rest of the property. Here's a breakdown on the comprehensive sign package. What's being requested is the one double-sided sign. It does have a two-by-two logo on the base of it, but the predominant component is that double-sided EMB, seven feet, seven inches by four feet, five inches, for a total square feet, once added with that logo, to seventy-one square feet. The maximum signage for freestanding area allowed is sixty-four, which is under the twenty-five percent threshold to necessitate board review, but the portion that does necessitate this board review is the electronic message board component, which, if, as stipulated by the code, if the sign contains an electronic message device, except for time and temperature, then it shall be transmitted to the board of supervisors for review. Here we can see the proposed location of the sign, in the north of the parking lot, where that red dot is signifying where the sign would be placed, as well as to the right, I have a measurement from the roadway. You can see it's approximately ninety-three feet back from Highway seventy-seven. And here is an imagery of the proposed signage, got that two-by-two logo on the base, and then on the top is that electronic message board, about ten feet tall and five inches. Some items of consideration, the proposed signage does run perpendicular to Highway seventy-seven, so it's double-facing, it'd be facing the east and the west, so both sides of the roadway there. The sign does not stand significantly taller than surrounding properties or other signage located at surrounding businesses, nor does obstruct views of neighboring properties, however, it's unique in the area for its electronic message board component. EMB being perpendicular to Highway seventy-seven does propose potential for distractive influence, though we have included stipulations to help mitigate that in terms of the rate at which it can change imagery and the brightness level as well. The proposed location, again, is ninety feet back from the highway, and again, the stipulations have been added to help mitigate any potential distractive influence. At the sign review committee, they voted three zero to forward CSR zero zero seven two five with a recommendation of approval with five stipulations. I have the stipulations listed here because we wanted to propose an amendment to stipulation four. The sign in stipulation four is to be deactivated from the hours of eight PM to seven AM. That stipulation was taken from a prior CSR for an electronic message board that was directly abutting the roadway. After talking with the applicant and considering the distance from the roadway in this case, we wanted to propose an amendment to eleven PM to allow for more fuller utilization of the signage, as well as ADOT has a requirement for signs along the roadway to be at eleven PM. This is further, far enough back that it does not fall under that jurisdiction, so ADOT would not be requiring it to be at eleven PM, but that's the code that they have in place for signs that would be. And considering its proximity, we thought eleven PM would be an amenable time, especially in case if the roadway's ever expanded, and then it does fall into the buffer that ADOT has. That's our thought process on moving that time back to eleven PM. With that, any questions for staff?
Any questions?
Just real quick, the, the change rate is what, like eight seconds? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's ADOT, isn't it?
The minimum display time.
Eight seconds.
I believe ADOT actually have.
I know they, I know they have a stipulation for alongside roadways or long roadways, so.
Yes, sir. ADOT has, must not display any form of animation and remain static for at least eight seconds, according to ADOT as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, does the applicant have a presentation?
No presentation, but they, they are in attendance.
Applicant would like to say a few words before I open up the public hearing.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board, I want to thank you all for keeping or having the most exciting, the best planning number last, I really appreciate that. My name's Kirk Feiler, I'm the chairman of the Pinellas County Republican Committee. However, I am not here today to talk about a partisan issue, just the opposite. A few weeks ago, I was here, and I stated I was only here to plant a seed. That seed has bloomed, of course, and that seed was simply a sign that our church wants to install in front of the, the church, a very well-designed sign that blends very well into the surrounding area, and in the grand scheme of things, is very small, as you just saw. Sure, it lights, but the only thing that illuminates are two words and a silhouette, those two words are Jesus saves, so you can guess what the silhouette is. As I mentioned last time I was here, this church, this is a church that does great things for the surrounding communities of. for the surrounding communities of not only Oracle, but Saddle Brook, Eagle Crest Ranch, Saddle Brook Ranch, San Manuel Mammoth, and the entire copper corridor. Things like helping families affected by the Cody Fire, helping people with addictions, homelessness, and much, much more. And these are not just church members, these are people the community with no questions asks. While I am confident the board will approve this request, I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Planning and Zoning, the board, and a special thank you to Supervisor McClure, who does what he normally does. He, he gets involved in the community. He actually took his time out of his busy schedule to drive out to the church, meet with us, and help this process. So thank you, Supervisor McClure. So, thank you and God bless from Living Word Chapel.
I have one card for the public commentary, so I'm going to open up the public comment period, which I think we just heard the public comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 17 as presented with the five stipulations.
Second.
Oh, wait, oh, hold on, more. Oh, and the amended, doesn't say that.
Stip four.
You know, I only, you know, so, okay, so I move that we approve item 17 as presented with the five.
Stipulations.
Five stipulations.
And the amendment.
With the amendment, thank you so much, with the amendment to number four. There we go. Now I have it right, thank you.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, thank you. Have a great day, and God bless you. So I believe we're to the point of time of a, we already have, we've recessed our executive session, so we're just going to reinstate or go back into exec session. And later on, we'll come out and adjourn, and it's riveting. And we can, there, thank you.
Resess.
Thank you. Been stretching for words. Okay, can I get a motion to get out of exec session?
Motion to move out of exec session?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Hey, do you have something for me?
Yes, sir.